Will you all bow with me? Dear heavenly Father, thank you for this beautiful day that you provided with us. Thank you for this opportunity to gather and discuss the opportunities and needs of this county. We pray that you bless our country, you bless our state, you bless our county, and you bless our commissioners, and may all the decisions that they make bring honor and glory to your name, in your son Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call roll now Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Commissioner Moore Ziegler.
That's my shot.
Commissioner Moore Ziegler. Commissioner Walker.
Present.
Vice Chairman Sankey.
Here.
Chairman Singleton.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, comments from our citizens. First, Carol Ann Muston from the Montgomery Bike Club. And again, I please try to limit it to three minutes in consideration of everybody.
Absolutely, I have some information to pass out.
I'll pass it along for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Bike Club sincerely expressed our condolences for the loss of your former chairman, Elton Dean Senior.
Will you speak directly into the mic?
Certainly.
Thank you.
As the Bike Club, we want to express our condolences for the loss of your former commissioner, Chairman Elton Dean, and we appreciate his efforts and his friendship to the Bike Club in the past. On somewhat happier note, we're happy to announce the 20th Annual Glasner Autumn Challenge, which is a huge bike ride in the community. It has over 500 riders have already registered this year. We leave on October 22nd from the Alabama State Football Stadium, from inside the stadium. People ride various distances up to 128 miles and then come back into the stadium. According to the research that the AUM School of Business has done, the GAC, as we call it for short, has an economic impact of over a million dollars in the county because of hotel, food, expenses people use while they're here. So thus far, we have many riders already registered from as far away as Illinois, Virginia, Washington DC, Texas, South Carolina, Louisiana, closer to home Mississippi, Tennessee, Georgia, and Florida. We also have people registered from within Alabama Huntsville, Mobile, Dothan, Tuscaloosa, Birmingham. So we look to have rooms in Montgomery Hotels booked up pretty well for that weekend. In the past, law enforcement from Montgomery County Sheriff's Office and the Montgomery Police Department have helped to ensure safety for all our riders, especially busy intersections where you have less experienced riders crossing, you have a lot of traffic that's not used to seeing that many bicycles all at once. So we hope to continue that support from the county commission. As the praise for the activity and the support of the troopers and sheriff's deputies and city officers has been really well marked, noticed by riders, and really appreciated in the past. We've gotten already support from the City Council of Montgomery to help cover the expense of their MPDE officers. So thus far, and your information reflects that the estimate is that we'll need 100 deputy hours for a 10-hour shift to cover the needs of such a large event with so many riders of so many levels for so many distances. In the past, you've been good and covered the total cost of our deputies. This year, there's a slight increase to $4,500 to help pay for the deputies again this year, and we would humbly request that you consider that to give us that economic help to cover deputies for our event.
Have we done this in the past? This is all new to me.
Yeah, we've done that in the past.
Okay.
Yeah, this is our 20th.
Outstanding. We ride 128 miles? Where do we go?
Up and around through, outside of the county, out to Pitlala area and back. Not everybody does 128 miles. There are other, there's 20 shorter distances for the kids. I think we have an eight mile, five mile, then we go all the way up to metric, which is a...
That sounds like my speed.
There you go. We would welcome you to come out and join us.
Do you all stay inside Montgomery County?
It does go outside of Montgomery County, but most of the money stays in Montgomery County.
Most of the rides in Montgomery County?
The riders, people stay in Montgomery County.
But they ride outside.
Yeah.
We expect our usual discount rate from the sheriff.
This is, I'm glad that y'all are here, and I've known about this event for several years, and anytime I'm in a room that it's talked about, I brag on it. This is a big deal that's in Montgomery County, and it's well done. I've heard nothing but great reports from the participants. I'm so glad that y'all do this. We need these types of events in Montgomery County. You're asking for 4,500. Unless any of my colleagues want to fight me on it, I know our collective monies are gone or close to it. I would like to sponsor this. I would like to pay for this out of my appropriations, just to show you my support for this event and my appreciation that y'all do it. It really does highlight beautiful South Montgomery County, and I want y'all to keep up this good work. Thank you.
I totally agree with you. Dr. Glasner, I knew him personally. He did emergency surgery on both my grandparents, so you know, near and dear to my heart. So I agree, I would like to support it too and with you on this one.
Is anybody riding with them? That's what I want to know.
Well, you're welcome to ride. We'll get you a bike.
Now, I don't ride a bicycle. I just ride the stationary bike.
You can contact us, there's on that flyer, there's our information. We will get you a bike and helmet and make sure you're safe.
Thank you. So did the sheriff have anything to say about this?
All this money goes to his deputies.
Yeah. So Florence, out of my designated, 4,500 out of my designated, all right, to take care of that.
Let me say that it's thanks largely to the deputies, and they are very vigilant about making sure people are safe and crossing big intersections and making sure out in the county that people are not using us as a sport target with their vehicles. So we appreciate the sheriff's department very, very much.
Absolutely.
They're always excellent.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
This is Earlene Wright with Greater Madison Park.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, my name is Earlene Wright. I'm the president of Greater Madison Park Neighborhood Association, and I have a number of my neighbors here this morning. And we're here because we want to know what the county commission's stand is, what your position is on providing the sewer system to the Madison Park area.
I can speak on that for you. Our plan, our commitment is to provide safe and efficient wastewater for every resident inside the city limits of Montgomery.
And that means?
That means that we have had numerous studies, we've got all the data together. Our next step is to come to you and find out how many of you want septic, how many of you prefer sewage, because we need to lay out both options for you. And if it's possible to do sewer, if the cost is there and we can do sewer, for example, we've got one home that's $15 million to do sewer. So obviously, that's not...
I've seen the report, and I disagree with your numbers, but let me say this. Madison Park has been advocating and petitioning for the sewer system for many, many years, and we are not, and y'all, we are not going to accept septic tanks. We already have septic tanks. Why would we want to get other septic tanks when we know what the problems are with them? That makes no sense to us. We are in a low-lying area. We don't care where we have to go, who we have to talk to, and to include the DOJ, that these injustices and discrimination to our neighborhood be met, be corrected. This is insane. For over 30 or 40 years, we've been suffering and trying to get stuff out there. So why should we settle for substandard services in the Madison Park area?
Keep in mind that the county provided sewer for every resident in the Montgomery County part of Madison Park.
But you know, I vote for a county too.
I know you're jumping on us today, but...
I'm not just you.
I know, I know you're not, but I want to make sure everybody understands that the county did do that, and every resident that wanted, every resident's been provided access to sewer in Montgomery County, not the city Montgomery part. But about half of them did not even tap into it when they had that option because they kept a septic. I've got septic. If they ran sewage to my house right now, I would stay septic because my septic works fine.
So the...
The main thing we want to do is make sure everybody has, again, safe, clean means to dispose of the waste. And we're committed to do that, but if we did all 1,200 count, all 1,200 houses inside the city limits, again, that's 88, 89 million dollars for us to do them all. We would love to. I mean, I would love to do everyone in, not only the city of Montgomery, but the town of Pike Road, the unincorporated areas. I wish we all had sewers, but it's not. We got to make sure that we do what we can, and if it's possible, if sewage is a feasible cost and we can do it, I'd rather do that because that's a lifetime fix. I've got septic myself.
I've got septic, three of us have septic systems on the commission and have no problem with our septic.
I'm a stopstop.
No, we're not, we're just comparing, we're not comparing apples to apples. The people who live on these large acres, they chose to do that. Madison Park has been almost relegated to tolerate these injustices and so forth.
Septic systems are not injustices. I think that's an unreasonable narrative to push. Septic systems are not injustices.
Yes, they are.
But it's right. Three of us have septic.
The Opera Funding was intended to address these issues, particularly in low-income communities, communities of color. We talked about that, then I've been talking about it since day one. They wanted me to hold up until the bipartisan infrastructure law was passed. That has been passed, and we still are not doing anything. Now, just had the conversation just one before you all got here. We want to spend, I guess, $3 million to upgrade the soccer fields out in East Montgomery, but we still are not doing anything except kicking the can down the road on the sanitary sewer. So I'm with you, whatever we need to do, we really got to get something on the agenda. We don't want septic tanks in Madison Park. Everything up and down 231, all the fast food restaurants, they're on city sewer. And so there's no need for us to settle for septic tanks, particularly if it's in low-lying areas and it's going to cause a problem. I'm with you. We just got to make a commitment to do it. President Biden has talked about equity and inclusion, and the money is there. We just got to make sure that we get the Opera, combined with the monies from the bilateral infrastructure law, and get it done. And we got to get the water, working sanitary sewer onboard. I think they have over $100 million in reserve, and they need to spend some of that money to address this issue. So we got a product of fight on our hands, but I'm with you.
I just want you all to know that Madison Park is not going to continue to be getting on the back of the bus. We got substandard services out there. We got fire hydrants that are just ornamental out there. They don't even work. And they knew when they put them out there that they was connected to residential water lines and the fire department couldn't use them. So it's the illusion that we got fire protection when we don't. We're tired of being on the back of the bus. And just like Rosa Parks and Ms. Browder took a stand and not accept what they've been given, we're not going to accept it.
Sometime that would take.
We're going to fight the fight.
And I'm with you on that.
If there wasn't a civil rights, if somebody had not taken a stand and not accepted the injustices that was given to them, we wouldn't, you wouldn't be on this county commission, and we wouldn't have black people.
I certainly agree with you.
We're not going to stop.
That's right. To answer your question, your question, to answer the question, what are we going to do? Our next step is to meet with Commissioner Sankey, to have a meeting with all the residents that are interested in having something different than what you currently have. And we go house by house, and we make a determination on what we can and can't do.
So you want to smooth us into accepting septic tanks?
No, ma'am. That's a heck of a smooth to give somebody either, to give that. I mean, that's, I wouldn't say we're smoozing anybody into accepting that.
That's what it appears to ask to be.
Well, this has never happened in Montgomery where somebody would give somebody a septic tank, ever, ever. And I'm not saying it's going to be septic. Again, we want to do sewer if we can, but we can't spend $89 million on sewer to get everybody, to get all 1,200. And that's just Montgomery, City Montgomery, again. That's not the county, that's City Montgomery. So my commitment to you and Vice Chairman Sankey, you ain't got to worry about him. He's working for you. Let's have the meeting, community meeting, and let's look at all the options, and let's come up with a solution that everybody hopefully can live with.
I'm not opposed to that, but Mr. Singleton...
And the same thing's going to happen with Commissioner Ziegler.
Mr. Singleton, those numbers that you keep quoting, $89 million for 1,200 people, I saw the Crebs' report, engineering report, and the first one came back at 10 million, and the second one came back because it didn't include everybody. The second one came back to 15 million.
If you could do 10 million today, sold, 10 million.
I said the second report came back at 15 million, so I don't know where your numbers were coming from. Because the first one did not include all the residents.
I get reports, I don't know where, I'd love to see, please share that one with me because I would love to do that one.
I should have brought it with me.
Because we don't make the reports, I mean, I don't know.
I know you don't. I got, this is from Crebs Engineering.
Okay.
Montgomery Water Works and Mrs. Sankey and Brantley Lyons ordered that first report that we got back.
Is that just from Madison Park?
Yes. You have, you have a legitimate complaint?
Yes.
Your complaint is not with the county, and it's not even with the city. Your complaint is with the Montgomery Water Works. Now, we are trying to do what we can to provide the funds to get this done when the money has been made available for years to the Montgomery Water Works. They just refuse to go after the money. If you're asking me, I think it was a conscious decision to deny Madison Park the benefit of city sewer. So that's why I say I believe that you have a legitimate civil rights claim, because you've been discriminated against. There ain't no question in my mind in terms of whether or not you've been discriminated against, whether this, I don't, we don't have the power to discriminate against you when it comes to providing clean wastewater, because we don't have any control over it. Believe it or not, the city appoints the board for Water Works, but they don't run anything over there. It's Montgomery Water Works that makes the decisions whether or not to get the money that it would take to provide the kinds of services that you're asking for.
I realize that my...
That's what's happening. We can sit here, we have $89 million, and Isaiah's been advocating for Washington Park. I've been advocating for Hunter Station and Ocelmo Road. They're in the same shape that you're in, you know, and they are not getting anything either. We have $89 million. That's not enough to get that job done, but the feds have made money available through the state of Alabama that the Water Works can't apply for and refuses to apply for to provide the services that you're asking for. We can't force them to do it. You talk about going to DOJ and getting people, get somebody on them. Go to their board meeting. The people that sit on that board, you vote for them too. The city council elect those people. They got a board that's elected, that's appointed by elected people that don't do nothing but let the Water Works do what they want to do. Enough is enough. Now, if you're going to make a complaint, make a complaint against somewhere that somebody can do something for you, we don't have the money, enough money to get all the things that you're asking for you, and you deserve them. You should have had it long, long ago. There ain't no question about it. I can't sit here and say, you shouldn't be here doing it. No, no, I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is, you're at us, there ain't a whole lot we can do, because even if we got it, guess who's got to put it in? Guess who's got to, who controls it?
There is something you could do. You could stand with us.
But guess who you're going to be paying your water bill to and all that? You're not going to be paying us.
We know all of that, and we know that Montgomery Water Works is a private company. We understand that. We know that. We know that. But what you could do is stand with us with this injustice that being done to us.
Ma'am, ma'am, let me, I'm the county attorney, and I talked to you before. I have been taking the same position for over 30 years.
It's been longer than that.
That the people in your neighborhood are paying taxes, they should be entitled to the same services as everybody else in the city of Montgomery. Those taxes are levied by the city. The city appoints the members of the water board. Now, the county, I know personally, I've given opinions, I have stood by you, I'm very sympathetic. That's been going on well over probably 40 years, to my recollection, but the county has done everything it can do and has stood with you because I have done it myself. I've been here since 86, but we can't do any more than stand with you. Now, the city water board, it's their responsibility, but go back to the city, the city collects the taxes that funds the water board. And so I know that Chairman Singleton and this commission will do everything they can to help resolve this problem, but it gets to a point we can only basically stand, or they can legally stand by you. So I want you to understand, I know, since I've been representing the commission, the commission has taken a position, you deserve the same services that the rest of the residents in the city of Montgomery are getting, but we don't have the authority, the commission doesn't, so...
Thank you for that, and believe you me, we will be at the city council meeting. We've been going to them for the past almost two years now advocating for this, and they had given us a commitment that we would receive the sewer. Now, I understand that they appoint that board, but, and then we had gotten as far as ADEM having a project manager for us, for that sewer project out there, and then all of a sudden it stopped, for whatever reason. Now, we came to you all today because we know that you are partnering with Montgomery with that American Rescue Plan Act funds. So that's why we came here today. But we haven't stopped advocating for our position with the city.
And that's another thing, that's right. We, the county commission's partnering with the city. If we were separate, we wouldn't be having this discussion today. If our money, if we did not partner with the city, we'd be separate. We're trying, we sympathize, we're going to do everything we possibly can. Out in our county, I've got people, like you mentioned, fire hydrants, they don't even have a fire hydrant. I've got people in my county out in unincorporated areas now that don't have running water. They don't have a pipe, they don't have water. So we're sympathetic. We want to do everything we possibly can, and we're going to do everything we can. You've got the commitment from Commissioner Sankey, you couldn't have a better representative working for you. I'm committed to doing it, and we're going to make sure that we do everything we possibly can.
I believe it.
But we need to have Commissioner Sankey and Carmen and the ones that represent the people that have these issues. We need to have a community meeting, get us all in the same room together, let's look at your Crebs', I want to see that. Let's look at what they gave us at our joint meeting, and let's come up with a solution.
So when you want to have this meeting?
I'm open any time. Y'all work it out, I'll be there.
Okay.
I grew up over there, I know what it's like.
Uh huh, okay, we're good.
I've been in Madison Park lately.
Doug, I think to clarify, when you were saying 89 million and you were questioning that number, your number, the 10 million and the 15 million, would be to rectify the issues in Madison Park. The 89 million would be, is the number that we have been given by an engineering firm that would be to convert everyone in Montgomery County, city, county, who is, who needs to be upgraded to the sewer sanitary system. So that's the differentiation.
But everybody doesn't want to be on it.
Well, yeah, everybody, period. So then we've got to figure out of that 89 million, which is not sustainable, how many of those people actually want conversion? Not everybody does. So how many of that 89 million actually want conversion and then get a real working number and go from there? That's what he's talking about, the door-to-door, not schmoozing people, but finding out if they even want conversion, because not everybody does.
Okay, I was contacted by Levitate, and she told me, she asked me if we had any surveys or whatever for what people, whether the people wanted sewer or not, and we do have some, but we didn't get, our surveys didn't include everybody. I think we got about 50 or so names, but we can get that. Everybody out there wants septic tanks, don't want septic tanks.
Not everybody, not everybody.
Well, the ones that probably didn't connect were the ones that probably couldn't afford to connect. That's an issue, because you got a lot of...
And that's why they didn't connect.
Because they couldn't afford it. They could not afford it.
Some people don't want it, and some people don't want to pay the connection fee, but some people are bound to stay on septic.
We got to be mindful of that. Don't let the connection fee sway you all. That's not going to be an issue.
Everybody in the Madison Park area has a problem with their septic tanks because we're in a low-lying area. When it rains a lot, that sewer backs up in your house and in your yard. So I don't think anybody in the Madison Park area wants septic tanks.
Yes, y'all being here is...
We're living through that.
Thank you all for coming. It's important to get on the record. I'm with you, and I stand behind you 100%. So thank you all so much for coming. It's not been a waste of time, I can assure you of that. That's what it takes. You got to show up, you got to be engaged, you got to get on the record. You know, we didn't come all this way, you know, and the progress we've made, you know, just by sitting at home, you got to stand up and be counted.
I've got one question.
Sure.
What can we do about Montgomery Water Works, besides me sending my discrimination complaint to the department?
Let's get our group meeting, community meeting, let's set that thing up.
Can we invite them to somebody from the board? Can we invite somebody from the Montgomery Water Works board to be there and be present so that they can help answer some of your questions? Because like you just said, you pay them, you know, water's not free. So they got to answer the questions that you have and what they're going to do. And then from there, once they don't give you the right answer, then you go from there and you make your next step.
Yeah, and I assure you, we want to do everything we can to handle this on the local level, getting the DOJ involved in anything is, that would open up a Pandora's Box of issues that we think we have a bad issue now. We want to do everything we can on the local level to resolve this before.
You know Madison Park is not afraid to open their Pandora's...
Well, it would slow everything down tremendously.
Thank you, Ms. Wright.
We should make yields on the result.
Thank you all for coming. It takes courage and engagement, so we appreciate you very, very much.
All right, Brother Levi.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I came to bring some good news today. And the good news is that the report that I made the last time about the young man that got shot in the head, after 16 days in the hospital, they released him to go to rehab in Birmingham. His recovery has been phenomenal, and he is a living miracle. And I just want to let you know that nothing is too hard for God.
Amen.
When I hear about all the problems that we face in the city and the county, my word to all of us this morning is nothing is too hard for God. Now, with that said, I hate to have to bring bad news, and that is last Thursday, a young man whom I mentored shot his granddad in the chest and killed him. That really hurts. What I mean is, that was a good boy. I am not kidding you, that was a good boy, and he had good training. Love the Lord. Went away to college and got involved with the wrong crowd, got hooked on drugs, and they did him in. They tried to get him in rehab. And the grandparents went and picked him up, brought him home, but he was hooked on drugs. By the time 3:00, 4:00 o'clock in the morning rolled around, he got up and asked his daddy for the keys. and asked his daddy for the keys. And his daddy said, "No." And he pulled out a gun and shot him in the chest. But I'm telling you, I know the boy. That was a good boy, I know what I'm talking about. And I wanna tell you today, there's something that we can do if we'll work together. So, I'm gonna be working with all the pastors in the area. I've talked to a number of them about a concept called Faces. F.A.C.E.S. Fathers Aggressive and Childs Eternal Educational Salvation Faces. It's sort of like what Willie Cook had. His was called Face. Fathers Active and Childs Education. But things are so bad in our communities, especially with gun violence, until just having active fathers is not good enough. You've gotta have aggressive fathers. I know what I'm talking about because I see those fathers at Lee High School, supporting those boys playing football. They are aggressive, and that's what we need. And all I'm asking you to do is, let's work together to make it happen.
Thank you, Brother Levi. Declare public hearing open regarding alcohol license application for special events retail, Ferencio El Perezio for September the tenth and the twenty-fourth. Is there anybody here to speak on that? Declare public hearing closed. Florence?
We'll consider the minutes of the regular meeting of August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider accounts payable checks and payroll checks.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Our first item of new business is a presentation of the proposed twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three operating budget, construction programs fund budget, and the emergency management communications district board budget for review and comments.
Good morning. Florence just told you, in the packet, you've got those three budgets for review, and then we'll have it on the next agenda, assuming, and you'll vote on it then. Just a summary, I think on page eight is the operating budget, which includes the general fund and special revenue funds. The total operating budgets and expenditures are one hundred and twenty-eight million for twenty-twenty-three. That compares to one hundred and twenty-two million. In twenty-twenty-two, the projected revenues are one hundred and twenty-eight million. Fund balances of three-point-eight million are budgeted to cover the difference in twenty-twenty-three. All of that is for road and bridge capital projects. The general fund is a balanced budget with revenues and expenses of ninety-one-point-seven million compared to eighty-five million in twenty-twenty-two. And the increase there is basically the continued growth in primarily sales tax revenue. As you know, we budget very conservatively. We don't try to put growth in there, we're always looking what we expect to get this year. But that's why the budget is up almost six million, is those revenues continue to hold steady and go up. And the expenditure increases include significant items which we use that revenue for. We are funding merit increases for employees in the twenty-twenty-three budget. Just a reminder, we fund those, those are based on evaluations by their supervisors. Increases in detention facility inmate medical and other operating expenses. Melissa, you know, presented one of those contract increases, which that and others is in there. Debt service requirements for the detention facility renovations. We had the bond issue last year, so we did have debt service increases as a result of that. And we've included a transfer to the construction programs, really for ongoing major repairs. That's just a brief summary of that budget. And then on page twenty-three, you've got the construction programs budget. It's a total budget of two million sixty thousand. Most of that's some bond money that's carrying over, so it's coming from fund balance. And then the other is the transfer that we're putting over there. And then on page twenty-four, the emergency management communication district board budget. It's restricted to nine-one-one activities, the sheriff's office actually manages that budget. The revenue and expense for twenty-twenty-three is eight-hundred-ninety-seven thousand with one hundred and fifty-six-six-hundred coming from fund balance. And that's just a summary of those proposed budgets, and like I said, it'll be on there for your vote at the next meeting. We discussed it a little bit earlier, any other questions?
Ms. Ch, that long-term lease, three-hundred-and-twenty thousand, who are we paying that?
Is that on the emergency management?
Yes.
Budget, that actually is, it's the city of Montgomery. It's for, I can't really speak in detail about what it's for since the sheriff handles that, but it's a lot of the, correct me if I'm wrong, radio equipment and towers. It's ongoing, they, you know, we jointly fund a lot of that.
Thank you.
Any other question?
Thank you, Cheryl.
Thanks.
You always work so hard on this and make it look so easy, I know it isn't. This is the most important thing that this commission is charged with doing. Putting together a budget to run the county and all of the services that we have to deliver to our citizens. And we really, really thank you for the work you've done over the years and that you've done this year. You've always, since I came on this commission, you made it easy for me to start to understand what you were doing. And you make it easy every year for us to get through this process. And I just wanted to let you know, it didn't go unnoticed, I really appreciate it.
I did try to make it easy for you.
You're good.
Thank you.
We all echo, I echo that.
We all, you're right, you're right, we all speak counsel.
Is this something we need to move on?
No, this is just the presentation, and it will move, it's sort of a confusing process, but it will move to be voted on in the formal session at the next meeting.
Okay, so anyway, Tammy, can you get that off our screen, I guess? Do we need to? Because it's on our screen. Is it gonna let us move on without doing something? Okay, it moved on, okay, that's, okay.
Next, we'll consider an alcohol license application for a special retail event for Latino Festival on September tenth and September twenty-fourth.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider a resolution to award a bid to Axon Enterprises for law enforcement body worn cameras, in-car cameras, and a digital management system for the sheriff's office.
I so moved. A second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider addendum number one to a lease agreement with Faulkner University.
I so moved.
I said, second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider an origami software subscription renewal agreement for risk management.
I so move.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
I can't. Consider miscellaneous appropriations to agencies.
Move for approval.
With the addition, I'm sorry, with the addition of four hundred dollars from, to the, I'm sorry, that's on the wrong page. The...
Was agency first?
Here it is agencies first.
I added something to agency. First was not, first was...
I'm sorry, how much did you add?
Ten-twenty.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, Commissioner Harris added a thousand twenty dollars appropriation to successful living.
Move for approval.
A second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations to education.
I so move.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue with the addition of four-thousand-five-hundred-dollar appropriation from Commissioner Walker to the Montgomery Bicycle Club.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider budget change request number nine for the county commission.
Move for approval.
A second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider budget change request number one for the district attorney's office.
Move for approval.
A second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider budget change request number seven for the sheriff's office.
I so move.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider position fill requests for the appraisal department for an appraiser one and a mapping technician.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider position fill requests for the detention facility for two corrections officer trainees.
I so move.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider a position fill request for the probate judge's office for a customer service clerk.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider a position fill request for the sheriff's office for a deputy sheriff trainee.
I so move.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider travel training requests for appraisal, the commission, community corrections, detention, engineering, and the sheriff's office.
I so moved.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered. Okay, Mr. Attorney.
No, thank you.
Mr. Kendall Anderson, Deputy Administrator.
Good morning to all. For our emergency rental assistance, this last amount that we received, we are up to one-point-two million and some change. And the amount of assistance dispersed, which is of this funds, we have helped three-hundred-and-three persons so far. Any further questions?
Any calls from any of the citizens with the paperwork process that's required to complete the application for the funding? Any challenges with the people we're trying to serve as it relates to the application process?
Those are kind of, they vary, you know, can you tell me where my application is? And ma'am or sir, you have to do this part, or they're waiting on this to come in. Sometimes it is as simple as, sometimes it's as difficult as getting the landlord to submit information. Sometimes it is as simple as, you just need to put this bill in the system. And once that bill's in the system, they can move on to the next several steps. A lot of times, it may be, you know, how long is this gonna take, or where is it, I'm waiting, that kind of deal. But those are often issues where somebody's gonna get to it today, we'll get it processed through the pipeline. So, I'm not hearing that many paperwork issues or issues of, I can't get in the system, I can't do this. It's oftentimes just, I just didn't understand that I needed to do this. Or, you know, I didn't get an opportunity to talk with anybody in customer service to get a full understanding of that. So, just small issues, but most time it's working and people are happy, and we're giving people process, so, and that's the goal.
So, Horne did make the improvements in terms of the call-ins and all that, you know, they had some challenging issues. Their improvements have been made with the call center and all that?
As far as I'm aware, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir.
No problem.
You had a birthday since our last meeting, didn't you?
Last Wednesday, yes, sir. Thank you, I appreciate it.
All righty.
Commissioner Harris.
Happy birthday, Kendall. Short weeks are good weeks. Have a great week.
Mr. Dickler?
Happy birthday, Kendall, thank you for all that you do for all of us here. And I wish everybody a great, successful week.
Commissioner Walker?
We have had, in Montgomery, two ESPN bowls in the past couple of weeks. You know, it all started several years ago when ESPN and Montgomery partnered to bring the Camellia Bowl at Christmas time. And that has since grown into now we have the ESPN Kickoff Classic, which is, you know, they call it Week Zero of college football. It's all about those media TV generating revenues. But we also now have the Red Tails Classic, which is another ESPN Bowl. And they're all at Crampton Bowl, and if you've not been, it is such a great experience. Crampton Bowl seats about twenty-five thousand spectators. And of course, you have the multiplex and sideline and press box opportunities. But it is, so it's a smaller game, and great teams always come in. Camellia Bowl always winds up being a close match. But Montgomery really is getting on the map nationally for these bowl games. ESPN, I was at the Red Tails Classic on Sunday night. ESPN, I was at the, the Red Tails, uh, Classic on Sunday night, uh, and I spoke to the ESPN rep. They love Montgomery. They love the people in Montgomery. They love the convenience of our downtown. They love to be able to deal with the city and the county and the chamber. They, they love this experience here. Uh, Johnny Williams is with the Central Alabama Sports Commission, and he orchestrates all this, uh, but it's wonderful, and we've had two of our three bowl games this year, uh, football games at Crampton Bowl, so please go if you ever have an opportunity. Uh, you will not regret it, you will enjoy the experience. The other thing, y'all, we might, uh, you may have noticed, uh, one of our regular, uh, citizens, Cruz Reeves, is always at our county commission meetings. He is missing, uh, today, and, and I just want to ask everyone to please pray. Uh, for him, he was working at his house, he was on a ladder on his roof, and he fell, um, from the roof, and, and, and thank, thank God, literally. He spent a couple of days in the hospital, it could have been so much worse. He does have cracked and bruised ribs, which if you've ever had that, it is, it is incredibly painful, uh, but fortunately, this is something he will recover from, but we are thinking about him and praying for him, and we appreciate his, his commitment to, uh, the city and county and, and, and how he, he stays on top of things and gives information back to the community. So we're praying for you, Cruz.
Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
You forgot something.
Yeah, whatever.
We have a star on this, on this commission, our chairman, national television. Did you see that commercial?
Oh, no, I missed it.
Biggest smile in the world.
Good, good.
Oh, yeah, you were standing up there with some, some other people.
Excellent.
Ratings go up or down.
That's my chair.
I didn't see you.
Yeah, you were, you were in there.
Oh, good.
The only one of us.
That's great, that's great.
If you had given Doug a chance, I'm sure he would have mentioned that.
It was a commercial, or you mean when he was flipping the coin?
It was a commercial.
Oh, okay, good deal.
Well, Commissioner Sankey did Sunday's coin flip.
Well, I was out there with him.
Yeah, well, I didn't do it either.
Hey, Doug, Roger Schultz wanted to know why I never get to do the coin toss?
Well, Camellia Bowl.
I told him, I said, well, we still got the Camellia Bowl.
Well, keep moving right on, everybody.
Must have been that charm you was using, Commissioner Walker.
Yes, that's my charm.
Well, let me, before, disclaimer, I asked, uh, Commissioner Sankey if he'd do it for this game, because I did the first game, and it was raining this game, too, so I asked him.
And that's why he, he asked me to do it, and I was happy to oblige.
I asked, I asked him before.
No, yeah, this weekend has just been full of, uh, excitement and entertainment, uh, the entire weekend. I think it started Thursday, uh, down at the Italian restaurant there, I missed that.
Oh, that was really fun.
Yes, yes, I missed that. I was trying to do too many things at once, I suppose. Uh, but Friday night, the gala, uh, and after the gala, we went outside, and there was concerts, you know, and so forth. I thought I was in a real major, major city, uh.
You are.
This past weekend. Uh, well, you know, we, we're getting there. But yes, Montgomery's really growing, and, uh, I'm, I'm grateful, uh, to be part of, uh, this, this process, actually. So had a real great time, and, uh, lots of folks in Montgomery, uh, and I was just hoping that there would be no incidents, and I believe, uh, we got through the weekend, uh, with no incidents, if, if, if I'm correct. So, uh, just wanted to say that I'm, I'm proud to, to be a part of, uh, the citizens re here, uh, so, thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna recess into, uh, executive session. Mr. Lernie, do we need to, again, I can't remember, do I need, do we need to make a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion. Move there, we're moving to executive session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So we're gonna go to executive session, and we will adjourn, I guess, after executive session. So, thank y'all for being there.